Six o'clock, I'll call the regular council for April 5th to order. I'll start off by the prayer by Pastor Steve Ires.
Let's pray. Well, again, I just thank you for this opportunity. Lord, I do pray for our city council, the men and women that work for our village. Lord, I pray that you continue to give them wisdom and guidance, and Lord, I pray that you give them protection. I just pray for our village, for the same reasons you just give us, continue to protect us, light the path, and let us go forward. Lord, we just thank you, and we praise you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Cheryl?
Marth.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Ridgeway.
Present.
Klepper.
Here.
Thank you. First, on the agenda is the announcement of Corey Wan's resignation from Bill's Council. He turned his letter in on March 29th, and he's resigning for some unforeseen circumstances, and I appreciate the opportunity, so. We will, Cheryl's gonna be posting that in the News Tribune and also in the Crescent. We give people the deadline to apply if you're interested in applying for the vacant spot until April 10th. We plan on doing interviews and doing the nominations, voting on the candidates on April 19th. So if you're interested and you're out there in the public, you want to try out council, please turn in your interest or your application. Yeah, before you, the approval of March 15th, regular council meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections?
Can we vote with only four people?
On something like this, yeah.
I'll make a motion to pass him.
You got a first, or you got a second?
Oh, a second.
All in favor? I guess roll call, sorry.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Marth?
Yeah.
You have a party of the approval of March 24th, the special council meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Roll call?
Klepper?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Marth?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is Mr. Ross Commisso to address the council members. Will you please stand up to the podium?
Absolutely, thank you guys, I appreciate it. Reason why I wanted to come in today, I had a question that maybe you guys could possibly answer and kind of give you my feedback on what I've been hearing. A certain situation that I think that you guys are aware of and affiliated with is regarding the background checks for the baseball association, which I think's awesome. I think everybody should have that in a sense of state of mind for others. My one concerning question was certain Clint Zedike that I heard through the park board, as well as you guys were affiliated with it, in regards to where he could not coach or be affiliated with any capacity down there due to a prior, quite honestly, a prior allegations that he served in 1999. My question was to you guys, was there something that's different than what we already have down there, why he's the one being pointed out on that?
I will say he's not the only one. Every coach, doesn't matter if you're the girls softball or boys baseball, any level, just like the school, they had to do a background check, and council's in favor of that. There's actually, I think, three individuals that were currently coaches in the past, that three of them have stuff that showed up on the record. The baseball, softball, and park kind of come with a list of things that would disqualify you. They give it to the company that's doing the background checks. All the coaches went online, paid the $10 or $11 and submitted all their information, and whatever shows up, it's a pass/fail. It's nothing that I vote on or council votes on, or they get a see if they pass or fail, the coaches that are in charge of the league, but it has nothing to do with any certain individual.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I did the same thing. I had, you know, I helped my godson down there as well, so I guess my concern is, is that he'd been coaching down there for, I think, the last eight years. We've had a certain gentleman that stole from our ball field and our kids years ago, and never got prosecuted. He had the opportunity to pay restitution. And to me, a fight that he actually did back in 1999, due to whatever circumstances, I think all of us have had our own little quarrels in our past, we all have closets. I'm not laying out any dirty laundry for anybody else, but I will do so if I need to. But when we speak about a Nate Garza, for one, when I was commissioner down there in baseball, before I took over his spot, he sold over $5,000 from our baseball association. He gave that money to his summer co-ed league to buy nice uniforms for, and he didn't get prosecuted. He was up to pay restitution. To me, a grown adult going and getting in a fight and paying his dues to society shouldn't, in my opinion, be affected towards how he is with the kids down there, especially when he's down there for eight years. When you have somebody that legitimately stole from our children and took from them and possibly could have, you know, closed down because we didn't charge, so all of our funding was from the concessions, and he took that, to where that could affect him. Now, I guess my question is, why is his act of stealing from kids different than a guy that got in a fight, felonious assault or not, got in a fight, have any bearing on how he is with the children? I mean, I also know people down there with sex offense that is down there and can go down there to watch their grandkids and/or their nephews and nieces. I guess my point of it is, is that who holds the regards to what stands right and what stands wrong? Because thieving's thieving to me, and when you take from kids, I put that on another level, especially when it's part of the baseball association himself, and he's still coaching. I don't like thieves. I have a very big problem with that, because if you're willing to do that, you're willing to do anything, it means I can't trust you, and that means I couldn't trust you with my kid, because if you're gonna teach any one of our children down there that that's okay, I got a problem with that, because we're putting a moral and ethical compass out there for our kids. I've always coached the game as if I'm trying to teach you the game, but I'm also telling you to teach you the game of life, because if you're gonna give me 110% on the field, I want you to do that in the workforce. I think a lot of people think that they may know me, but none of you do. I'm a very passionate guy, and I believe, and I wear my emotions on my sleeve. Clint Zedike has been nothing but great with those kids, and I guess I don't understand the bearing that holds on something that he was convicted of, and he did his time for, lays bearing on it now, when it was okay the last eight years with no problems. Me personally, I think there's a big of a puppet master that's going down there now, and I think there's another issue that I won't bring up, because that's in litigation right now, and I think if that's gonna weigh bearing on it, I think that's prejudice. And I don't think that prejudice should be laid upon one certain individual for not equally going to do it with everybody. And I think that that's where I have a problem, and I won't stop it at this council meeting, because I think it's wrong for, one, thieving, two, kids, and three, no repercussions. Why was his penalty lessened than what Clint's was? Well, the courts determined that.
Ross, I can, I can, you're talking about two totally different situations. We don't have any control over the ball association. I mean, they decide whether they want to take that to the police and turn somebody in and ask them to be prosecuted. I don't know a thing about that situation, so. But they would be the ones, so if they said, as a group, hey, if he pays the money back, we're not gonna push the issue, and I don't know if that's what they said or not, I mean, that's the call of whoever's involved in the association, and quite frankly, continuing to let somebody coach that they are aware of is involved in that type of thing, then I guess kind of shame on them, if they know that's happened. I mean, they're responsible, I mean, we have nothing in the ball association at all. We own a park that we allow people to use gladly, allow to use, and we have an obligation as the property owner to try and make sure that the children are safe, is what we're generally looking to. So, and to be honest with you, probably, we'd have to go back in the minutes, at least four years ago, I suggested that we should start doing background checks, and three, four, you know, whatever, and if it had been done then, and if anybody's, I don't wanna single anybody out, background was a disqualifying event, it would have been done three years ago, if we had have passed it. What turns out is, and now's when we decided to implement it, finally put it into place, and anybody who submitted to it, and again, you gotta have some objective criteria, it wouldn't be fair for us to say, well, this group, we'll get them all done, and then this group can decide, well, I'll just make up something that's ludicrous, that sex offense is bad enough, you shouldn't be able to coach a team, but this one, we know him, and he's rea, I mean, you gotta have a black letter and the way to do it, and I think, and Eric will know this more than me, that the offenses that we targeted were similar, if not the exact same, that the state sets for the school, as far as coaches for the school.
Yeah, if you go to the back page to apply for a classified custodial position, or as a coach at the school, the last page, you go to the school website and find it, has a list of all the offenses that you can't qualify to be anything. Bus driver, kitchen lady, playground, you know, anything, and I think they just use those same.
It's right out of the Ohio Revised Code, and it says, any of these, anybody convicted of any of these offenses is a disqualifying, and so we had to come up with an objective standard, and I think fairly said, well, I mean, our interest and school's interest are similarly aligned. We don't want anybody being exposed that closely and directly with children that may cause them physical harm, you know, sexual abuse, all the things that none of us would want to happen, and the state said that these are appropriate guidelines, so if they're appropriate for the school, why not just use those? So, in my opinion, and I don't know any of the, obviously, I don't go to park board meetings and things of that nature, anything that's been addressed to me has been, we got, we need to get these background checks in place, and we need to have an objective standard, and procedurally, how are we gonna handle them and determine what's disqualifying and what's not, and then once it's submitted, like Eric said, you know, either you pass, you know, it's pass/fail, either you pass or you didn't pass, and it doesn't matter according to those standards, whether you committed a crime 30 years ago or three months ago, if you got convicted of it, you know, or whether you did your full punishment and you're done with it, or you're still in the middle of being on probation, or something like that. I mean, the standard is based upon, and maybe somebody could argue with the standard, but not the way it's applied. It's basically convicted of one of these offenses, not eligible.
Okay, I respect that. So are you involved with it then, or Troy, or not? Because you're sounding to me that you're saying you're not a part of the park board or any.
I've never been to a park board meeting, I will tell you that.
So you guys were a part of?
I sit here in the council meeting, and I told them, as the owner of real estate that's being used by children, and quite frankly, nearly every other place, I can't speak locally, but if you read up on it, every place that owns, municipalities that own parks, counties that own parks, they have a background check requirement for youth sport leagues and things of that nature, and it's set up similar to what we, what we did. That's how I was involved in it. I told these people, we need to do it, quite frankly, as their attorney, for the protection of the village, but obviously, I don't want kids to be abused or anything either, but really, as the lawyer for the village, the village has potential liability, and there is cases out there where some coach has molested a child, and it happened down at the park while they were coaching, and it doesn't mean the municipality, it might have taken them two years to get there, they might have ended, ended up getting their way out of it, but they were sued as part of every, you know, the league was sued, the individual was sued, all those stuff, but obviously, amongst all those people, the village is gonna be the one with the deepest pocket, not that we're deep, but compared to individuals.
Right.
And so, that was why my advice to them a few years ago was, we gotta get this in place, and we talked about it once, and we were gonna do it, and then we backed off because the league.
Had already started.
Had already started, and they didn't really want to have their fingers involved in it, and I was saying all along, we should just say that it's a requirement for them to use our field, and you can ask people that got emails from me, I said the solution was, if they don't want to do it, tell them they can't use the field, and I know that's not a popular answer.
So the fields, so the little league fields are owned by the village, and the other, and the other portion is Defiance County, correct?
There is the part, uh, somebody'd have to correct me what part of the county.
Everything, fields 1, 2, 3, 4 are all on Defiance County.
On Defiance County, so.
All the rest of the fields are.
Fields, yep.
Okay.
Correct, so whatever that is.
Everything on that side of the drive.
So you're telling me that also, that when somebody, so if you're going to measure offenses, and somebody that has a felonious assault back in 1999, let's just say Justin Kuhn, for instance, back in his heyday, I believe he was in a lot of trouble as well. So, I mean, I guess the bearing of how you measure things is who, who does that? Who bases upon one thing worse than the other?
That's what I said. It's what's on your record.
Criminal record.
That's right. When they go back and look at your record, it's what's on the record.
So no matter what, Ron, no matter how many years back it is, and how much you paid his dues, our system, our system's that messed up to where you can't, you can't pay your dues, to where a man got in a fight with another man, and Ron, I know as well as you do, you scrapped back in your day, just because it's not on paper, doesn't mean you didn't do it. So at the end of the day, you're gonna tell me that somebody's going to be prosecuted over and over again for a guy that went down there for eight years without any problems at all? He's got 10 kids right now that he's having to coach down at the Catholic church, which I went and helped with many of the other kids that respect me, that I coached throughout the years, and, and went out there, and he's having, but there's 10 other, there's 10 other parents that are allowing their kids to go out and be coached by this man, and he's been, he's been coaching, and he'll be the first one to say, he knows nothing about baseball. He's probably the biggest cheerleader out there, but he brings people in that do know how to coach, and that's all he does. He is harmless, he's not affiliated, I mean, I guess, was there even a petition that was out there that anybody had any problems with him coaching down there? I mean, was there a problem to, or did it come into a dictatorship where somebody down in the park board has a problem that's now newly on the park board, and there's a situation right now that maybe is just a little bit tasteful for him, or distasteful for him, to where now things are becoming personal? And if that's the case, well, then, then we'll find that out, because I think that it's wrong when you guys balance what your history is and anything like that. If all of us really went up there and cleaned our records out, I'm sure we all have our own flaws. Doesn't define who you are as a man today, or a young lady today. To me, I go, I don't understand the merit on based upon 1999, how it should affect him today, with he had a track record for the last eight years of no problems with those kids. No one, no one. And at the end of the day, he brought on nine other coaches, including my father, which I told him, you will coach this year, you will not do a background check, you're 80 years old, and you still coach at Defiance High School. So at the end of the day, you will go down there, you can coach outside that field, and you will do that book. And at the end of the day, I, to me, guys, I'm a realist, and I'm a common sense guy. I'm not building watches, and I'm not building rocket ships. I'm a pretty smart guy, and when I, when I, when I see BS, I call BS. And, and to me, I just, I've had my own closets, I got my own problems, I did my own things, and I'll admit to them, because I'm that kind of a man, and then people can judge me based upon that. But when you got a guy that has really, quite honestly, paid his dues to society, but then also had eight years to show, quite honestly, the opposite of what he is today, or what he isn't today, for eight years, there was no problems, there were no discrepancies. Now, all of a sudden, he's out. Nate Garza stole from our kids. Nate Garza, that should have been a prosecution offense, but then because it wasn't, that merits him to be able to coach, because we didn't prosecute, that's.
That's on the league, that's not on us. They're allowing him to coach, and they assume, they know that he did that, I assume somebody does.
And that's my, that's my point, Troy. That's why.
I mean, I personally think he should have been, if somebody was stealing, they should have been prosecuted, that's where I.
Over $5,000?
Yeah, absolutely. If it wasn't, I don't think it should be talked about. No, I'm just saying, I said if somebody has.
I don't think something should be talked about that happened in 1999 that he paid his dues on.
You might want to remember, this is being broadcast live, and everything you've said is public record now, including all the things you said about all those specific persons that you named.
Thank you very much, and I also knew that as well. Okay. I appreciate the input. So that was my concern and my question, because when I look at somebody that is actually very positive to the kids, and I feel that maybe possibly begin a raw deal with, and I think others that are down there that are portraying something that they're not, should be also called out on that. So that's my point of it. It's not about laying out anybody underneath the bus, it's facts, and that's exactly what it is. I'm not throwing anything out there that is not proven, and not, I was the commissioner down there, so I know exactly what happened. And when I look at that, and I see a guy still down there coaching, to me, this is just me, though, but this is like everybody else's opinion, we all have one. A guy that specifically went out to an individual for whatever reason, went maybe beyond in whatever, and did bodily harm on somebody, it was one individual, and it was another man, it was back in 1999, when you have a man that stole from children and still allowed it down there to coach, I have no personal vendetta or worry about him, but at the same time, we're allowing somebody down there for that. And I don't, if you want to talk about the health of our kids and the well-being of our kids, I don't think that that's fair to those kids. I really don't, because potentially, these kids wouldn't even have a program, potentially, if we didn't get restitution for that, because now we charge for these kids to play, or they have to work the concession.
I think this needs to come to a halt, and I think that it needs to, if there's, if, Ross, if you have, if your feelings are this intense, then you shouldn't be talking to us, because we, we're not the people that set the rules. You need to talk to your park board.
Yeah, they told me that you guys were the ones that okayed it.
We're not God up here, we're just.
We're in favor of the background check.
Okay.
And there is, when you talk to a lot of different individuals, you can't go case by case, you know, what if you had a sexual predator that sexually abused kids?
Bring this to a head.
Back in 1998.
Right.
He paid his time, is it okay for him to coach kids?
I would say it'd be, no, no, you're right.
You can't go case by case, it's either, it's cut and dry, it's either you can or you can, and it either pass or fail, that's.
Now, see, I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that.
That's what we all agreed upon, the council and park, and that's what they all agreed upon, and the leagues, baseball, softball, they all agreed to the same thing.
Okay. Okay. So the park board would be the next step to talk with them, then, regarding this?
I think it's already been settled, the one that they have it written up.
Okay.
We wanted this done years ago, like Troy said, it's been four years.
And we didn't do it last year.
It started this year.
I started this.
You started this?
I started this, yeah, back when I was a park.
And it wasn't just a.
I know that.
It wasn't about any individual, not an individual at all. It was for the kids and other people coming into town.
And I remember that.
And you have nobody, you have no idea who they are. That's what it's trying to, to figure out, to protect the kids.
Got you.
Bottom line. We asked and asked and asked, we said, bring us something to the table that we can all agree on. They did that, we okayed it, and this is where it is now. Bottom line.
Okay.
Good.
Alrighty, I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
That's how it happened, Ross.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is approval of bills. You had a list in your packet, also piece papers, some more bills on the desk in front of you.
Yeah, those are from today.
From today?
Wow.
Are there any questions on the bills?
I have a couple. What's Lexa Pool LLC?
That's the police like policy.
Okay.
People that do the police policy.
And the Boys Park Concession was $819 for plumbing. What was that all about?
Water heater.
Water heater, okay. And Dirt Dog digging underneath Spencerville Street?
That was so we could get a water service under.
We couldn't do it with that rig we got?
It went much, much, much quicker with this.
Probably. And 10 ton of top dirt from Weber Sand and Gravel.
We got a lot of yards to fix.
Don't we still have a pile of hours of park?
I don't think so.
Not really.
No.
Not much.
We've got a lot of yard work from trees and digs and stuff. As I just, won't even touch the bomb, freezer's over on, what that kind of done?
For your truck route?
Not my truck.
Okay, those are the only questions I had. If nobody else has any questions, pay the bills.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Marth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
The next item is boards and commissions. The planning commission met on March 18th, minutes were in the packet. Their meeting, looks like discussed a lot split, and it was approved 4-0. Council committee reports, streetlight property committee met on March 20th. The minutes were put on your desk today. Anyone like to talk about those?
As you can see in the minutes, we wanted to kind of involve everybody in this decision. The roofs are bad on three of our main buildings, as they're listed there, for press, municipal, Kent's building, and the police department. Kent has since, since our decision, Kent has got some very favorable prices to do some patchwork on them. I was impressed with those numbers, Kent. You must have really worked him over.
No, I didn't trust him.
And we've discussed many times about building a complex to house everybody and everything. We talked about it, it drops, but when you're looking at roofs that cost $100,000, and we've got four or five roofs like that, and every building we have is an old building, and this is probably the newest one, and this was built in, I think, 64. And when you see the guys at night, they have a vein break or something, they have to go down to that building with the one door, move four or five pieces to get out the pieces they need, and then go do the digs, then find out what they need, and those parts might be down underneath the water tower, they might be up in Kent's building, they might be down at the sewer plant and the tin shed, they're just, they're everywhere. And we need to just bring it all together. And we've talked about it, and the biggest thing was the money, where's it gonna come from? Well, I have found out, after some guys did some research, that through our cap, there is some money available for that purpose. And I was gonna bring you aware to that, but with Corey gone, and I didn't have exact facts, I didn't say anything to you, Larry, so I don't want you to think I'm shooting you in the dark here, but.
You already did.
But we want to really look into this, and spend some time, and come up with some numbers, even if we have to spend some money to find out what we might be looking at as far as how much square footage we need, and how much per square foot, something like that's gonna run us, and would really like to have full council's blessing on the fact that, yeah, let's move ahead, let's find out what something like that would cost us. There's, you know, it's not something that's gonna happen by the, by Fair Week, you know, it's not gonna be here, just to find out where we get the money, then we gotta find out where we can put it. How much, everything's gonna, you know, it's, we're years out on this, if we stay constantly pushing on it, we're years out. So we would like council's blessings to continue to move ahead, and see what everybody, see what the numbers come up with. So that pretty much covers that part of it. Then one of the committee members, the two stoplights uptown, his theory would be that if those were, and my example was if they were set at 15 miles per hour, if you drove 15 miles an hour through town, you would make both lights. And that has been brought up before, we're bringing it up again, and so now, I will turn the floor over to anybody that wants to cut down what I said, or assist me.
I know Kent's against the stop, stoplights.
Number one, who drives 15 through downtown?
Well, there you go.
You're saying.
If you want to make it, well.
Well.
Because those are only two lights.
You gotta have somebody up at Watson 24/7.
Well, I'm just saying, it's not the fact of the speed limits, it's the timing to make the light.
Well, I think when we were, brought up before, ODOT has set the timing for those, so you'd have to ask ODOT to do a study, and I would almost bet money in this day and age, the one at Speedymart would get eliminated.
Well, that wouldn't bother me one bit.
Well, I was saying, you're gonna end up doing a traffic study.
But we own the one at Speedymart, right? Does that belong to the city?
All three of them do, but ODOT sets the timings, and then they're also gonna say, well, if you can hit them all green, you're gonna hit them all red, so what are you saving?
I would also second Kent. But there's been a lot of studies that have been done with the speed of flow through downtown versus, downtown prosperity. So as you slow down, give people an opportunity to look at town. And there are direct links to that. I understand what you're saying as far as the inconvenience goes.
But I mean, at some point, somebody's going to stop. You know, it's not green all the time.
I don't know. When I go through Auburn, I sometimes hit all green lights. It's amazing.
You can go through Bryan.
Huh?
You can go through Bryan.
Yeah. It's just, it's just luck, the, luck of the timing.
Hey, when I was a much younger man and we were building Dietrich Industries, my dad's company was a site contractor for Dietrich Industries. And all the stone that's in those parking lots came out of Union Quarries in Scott, Ohio. And we would run through Antwerp and Payne and then get up to Union Chapel Church Road and turn all that. The town of Payne was saying that these trucks were running too fast. Not just our trucks, but all the stone trucks were running too fast. So they sent the state police there. I didn't do any good. I don't even think he wrote that. I don't think they wrote a ticket all, all, the whole season. The following summer, the lights had been changed. And once we figured out that those, what those lights were, and it was like 15 or 20 mile per hour, if we'd come over the railroad track and, and that one had just turned green, if we just ran 15 or 20, whatever it was, we'd make the next one. We never had to stop. We never had to wind them trucks back up. We would just, and they were, they, the owner of Payne was very happy that, that it all took place. And I'm talking back in the 70s.
And you're talking probably, you were one millionth of a percent of the people that drove through Payne.
I drove through there a few times.
No, I'm just saying, I, I guess.
I'm just throwing it out there.
We got people that think it's a drag strip now. Even though you could get them lined, you're still going to have...
Well, it's not going to do you any good to race up there and then sit.
Yeah.
Well, you have somebody back out of a spot and then you...
Yeah.
Slows you down. Somebody's turning into a spot or...
I mean, I can ask ODOT, but I said they're going to want to do a study.
What's the purpose, what's the purpose of getting through the town without stopping? I mean, just so it's a nice even flow?
It'll slow you down. You will, you will slow, you will have to drive a lot slower to catch the lights than if you just drive.
No. Now, if you don't know what the timing is, how do you know if I slow down and go...
Well, the city of Bryan had theirs posted at 20 miles an hour what the sign said for their...
Yep. Well, there, you'll be back to enforcement and I don't, they can't...
Well, it's not the point of enforcing or speeding. It's just making the green light. You slow down to make the light.
Well, I can't hardly cross the street now, green or red. What am I going to do? And I'm in the crosswalk.
You know, here's what I think we should do, and you know me, always got that opinion. I think we should go ahead and check into it, Kent. See if the state would allow it or if they would do it. And see if there's, I would not think there would be any cost involved in it, but see what it would take to, to, if nothing else, just give it a try. Can't hurt anything.
And you're lame duck anyhow, so...
I'd like to jump back to the first, kind of the first topic.
Okay.
So we get council's blessing. Who runs with that?
Streetlight and Property Committee will, will push for a couple connections that I've got right now through our cap. We'll have to have a meeting with Roberta. She would be the, the person that would probably be best informed, maybe. No?
She said our cap's not involved. It's USDA. That link I was saying.
But I thought that was, I thought Roberta was going to take that through. No?
No, she was just saying...
Okay, then I misread you.
Well, I haven't seen your...
She has helped us on USDA before.
I'm having it more and more. Mommy Valley said CDBG didn't have money. Roberta said there might be some. Yeah, you could ask Roberta. I don't know if she would run it through or not.
So they have money to do that, survey and everything? I mean, or is no money out of pocket?
No, we don't know.
That, somebody'd have to talk to USDA or OD it, whatever the initial, what I said.
Council approval of...
Not the, if not spending any money or anything. I mean, you guys could do it on your own as a committee and...
Well, there's, there's, there's an opportunity, or if the opportunity comes up, that, that they say, well, you know, we don't know what you want. What do you want? 10,000 square feet, 20,000 square feet, you know? And if we've got to pay somebody that then, that comes in, and we've done this before. We did it with Pogomires. That's nobody over here that was there then. They were going to redo this building. And it was several million dollars. Do you remember that?
You've had several people look at this building.
Yeah. And, and there's nothing more expensive than rehabbing an old building. That's why the big boys, McDonald's and, and the big, the big real estate companies, they come in and drop them, build a new one. Much cheaper, much faster. But you know, when you look at all the buildings we've got, and we heat and we insulate and we insure and we put roofs on, and we've got stuff scattered everywhere throughout town, this is, this just makes good sense to bring it up to today's standards where, where the building would, is, is foamed, insulated, so that you can heat it with a match and low, low cost lighting, just multitude of things that, that you can save money on by getting rid of these old buildings.
Do you want to do a little research into that and see if there's any costs out of pocket? And do you want to wait until you get your, another council member on your committee?
I think that would be a wonderful thing as long as, well, you said the 19th, we would decide another council member. Okay. As long as everybody is in agreeance. If, if, most of you sitting here going, I'm not, I'm not interested in that at all.
I think you'd be curious to know how much...
I don't want to waste my time.
I don't want to give a lot of money to the village just to do a survey or anything. But if they have money available to do that and let, let us know what it costs per square foot and how many square feet we would need for all of our facilities being one.
I think we need to understand what the demand, what the village needs as far as size requirements before you start chasing down. I mean, obviously with pricing now, getting pricing on stuff today or the next six months, I hope, I hope that's not the new normal, but, when it comes to pricing, but...
Oh, yeah.
I, I would assume that it's probably not going to maintain these levels. But I definitely think it's something that the village should proceed with investigating.
And you?
I agree.
And Larry?
Okay.
Huh?
Senior moment.
To look into, yeah. See if there's funding available.
Michael?
Yeah, I've always been interested.
Okay, that's what we'll do. We'll take a look into it and, and report back.
Okay. Anything else for Streetlight Property?
I believe that covers it. Has that, has that answered all your questions?
Yeah, I was just getting off of the...
And then Kent is going to check into the stoplights through state for us. So the floor is yours, sir.
Are there any other committee reports or any other committees would like to discuss? I'd just say for the personnel committee, I know I talked through some emails with Cheryl about, they had, application deadline was on May 30th or March 30th, I'm sorry. March 30th. And I know they received some applications for village administrator job. And I think they went directly to the mayor. So when he gets back, we'll have a chance to maybe look over those and get somebody in here sometime soon for Kent to start training. So next would be the administrators' report. Kent?
I'll skip down to the very last thing. Just a reminder, the water sewer committee. As far as I know, we're still meeting with utility people over at the south tower this Thursday at 4:00. And if it's raining, we need to work the zoning office. This is just the preliminary to talk about the antenna situation. We really don't know anything yet when we're building a tower, when we're going to be taking any of that stuff. But they just need to take a look so they can start thinking about the plan. We're going to have to have one here in about a year and a half roughly. The EPA visits at the plant last Thursday. They did get through it all in one day. And haven't got the report yet, but I guess based on initial comments, they thought things were doing okay. We can see it in writing or whatever. There might be some adjustments to make or whatever, but overall it seemed okay. The rough quotes you have there, now I didn't have them look at the PD. I just had them look at us and City Hall. They've got their prices and I've sent back the agreement on that. The allocation grant, 166.5 for some valve work. One reason that's a little higher than, you know, what you think it should be. There are several of the large valves that are direct feeds off the water tower. So it drives the price of those up. So we should know by this fall if we're getting a grant or not. If we don't get the grant, we're not committed to doing anything. But they are valves that need replaced. The, oh, no.
I was going to say, when we clean, we had the water issues after we refurbished the tower. Is this kind of stemming from that and detective work kind of, because did we replace them from that issue?
We replaced three right outside of the tower that were not working at the time when we rehanded the tower. These are just ones that, they're just defective. So rather than doing them piecemeal as we do mains, I just thought this would make a nice little project just to get that many out of the way in one shot.
And has this come about because of our asset management plan with valve testing and stuff and, or is it just things that are...
Yeah, not really. It's those valves that they've known aren't working properly for a while. That small communities environmental infrastructure group meeting, it's pretty self-explanatory. And that meeting is at 1:30 this upcoming Friday. I figured a couple people can sit in Cheryl's office, another couple can sit in the mayor's office instead of everybody being crammed in mine with noise and everything else. But this will be a group of funders from around the state. We'll have a half hour to make our presentation for the lift station sewer job over on Defiance Avenue. And then they'll have a whole list of questions. The engineer should be able to answer most of them, but they also like to see representatives of the village here. And they might pop up with a few questions. Don't want to scare anybody, but one of these, I attended in person a few years ago. They had a representative of the village in tears by the time they got done.
Ron, I don't want you to go to tears, Ron. Come on.
I've got a question on that though, too, because we've not really seen any final plans. I mean, what are they bringing to the table there in regards?
You'll find out for you.
I'm just saying, we haven't seen anything on that.
No, and that's where all the technical stuff they'll answer. But they might have questions as far as finances. I just want Cheryl in there. No, for the most part, they're nice people, but they do also expect, you know, and the reason this one town really got bounced was they had done nothing on their end to help themselves. Their rates were super duper, duper low because they didn't want to hurt their, you know, residents. And there were some other issues that they didn't, you know, so these people were saying, you're coming wanting money from us, but yet you're not willing to help yourself. I don't think we're in that boat by a long shot. But that's why I want Cheryl there. Because they might have questions about raids and all that stuff. I don't look for anybody to end up crying, but they might, they might pose some tough questions.
I never cry.
Is that a writing bill or?
It's recorded.
So no, I don't look for any issues.
Is this their funding cycle? Is that why we're going after it now or?
No, they, they meet a couple times a year. And then I think it's, you get ideas for who is willing to give you money. Then they'll give you suggestions and all this and that. The one good news is we are getting the critical infrastructure grant for the well field job. The grant was 500, but Mommy Valley gets 20,000 for the administrative end of that. So we'll get 480,000. And just had some messages today. They're starting the environmental review, which shouldn't take long unless they find some artifact out in that field. So keep your fingers crossed.
Do we have CSX's blessing on that?
We've got everything lined up with them. Once the projects awarded, we'll just say, say you get it. Then we've got to work out, are you paying for the one extra step of insurance that they want or is the village? I would think it'd be the contractor. Otherwise, we're good to go with them.
Well, I didn't know with it being a CDBG grant, if there's a timeline on that. Are we going to get held up by CSX as far as approval goes?
No, we've got all that.
That's all.
They'll just need that one final insurance.
Okay.
They wanted it last August. And I told the guy, I said, well, we won't be going to bid till this year. And I would expect the contractor ought to pay that, not the village, because he's the one digging on you. And they said, that's fine. Just get back with us.
The contractor that's awarded the project.
Yeah. So that's something we'll work out with them.
Probably just going to be written in the bid application, right? You have to provide a insurance policy or something.
It would have to be, or it would be null and void if you sprung it on him afterwards.
Yeah. And so otherwise, we're, we're good to go on that. And CSX is happy. Then the last thing is we did, well, it's not official yet, but unless we get tons of protests or whatever, we do have our new permit. It will take effect the end of April. And like I said, there was a little bit of good news. The bad news is it's just going to cost us more to operate the place. We have to do more sampling. Limits on some things have changed. So I don't know what that's going to translate into modifications at the plant to treat the stuff. But we're still a class two. There was an outside chance we would have got bumped up a notch, which were really not been good news. So at this point, like I said, unless for some reason they get lots of letters protesting, it should be official. Pretty much it. Unless you have questions on other stuff.
Very good. Thank you.
I got one. Any news on High Street when they're going to start finishing?
Senior moment.
That's by the Catholic Church.
People have to be close for the lock.
Yeah. Well, today, let's see. They've had equipment issues. So that's why they hadn't been in on Chicago Avenue. I went down this morning. I thought they had their big excavator fixed and ready to go, but it turns out that was false. So all they did on Chicago was set a couple catch basins today. They probably won't be in tomorrow. They're hoping to get it fixed tomorrow and then start back up Wednesday. But this was also supposed to have been fixed two weeks ago. So right now, I don't know.
Is High Street done far as work?
I believe they've got everything tied in. Ohio Gas got their stuff done. So it should be done back to the intersection of Chicago where they'll take backup with part two or whatever you want to call it. But I don't know what Nick's got planned. If he'll pave that and we do Chicago and the other half later.
Because it would be nice to open that back up.
Can we?
No, it's basically open.
Can we push and get some pavement in there?
No.
I pushed him and he said he was going to, he was going to check.
If he's got to have more mobilization or whatever you call it, then it's going to be a change order. So it depends. And we're already going to be over on paving. I mean, I have no doubt.
Well, I guess the quicker we can get that open, the less damage we're going to continue to have on the side streets too. So...
And it's just a traffic period.
Yeah, one way or the other, we're going to incur more costs if we continue to work on it.
Parks are opening up. I mean, you got all, all kinds of people coming into town for, you know, softball, baseball, track. Businesses are busy, getting busier.
I mean, if we could just open up High Street for now, just let things back to normal.
The biggest problem when you, when you open it up, you always got to remember those truck drivers. So if you open it up to Chicago, where are you going to get rid of that truck driver at when he gets there?
Well, you're still...
I'm just saying, High Street opened the whole way.
Because phase, phase two is the water line, right?
And the storm sewer going to call it to the PD.
Yeah, and that's all, that's not in the road, right? That's...
The water line will be. So that'll be another nightmare when the time comes. But no, I can ask him what his plan is.
As long as they're just working on Chicago right now and don't need to be back on High.
Right.
That would definitely be advantage.
No, I'll find out.
Okay.
Anything else for Kent? Thank you, Kent. Looks pretty blank. Suster's report?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. Department heads, police chief.
All I had was in February, the department had 369 calls for service. And in March, we had 421 calls for service. And I also brought one of our new, the new cruisers we had delivered if anybody wanted to look at it afterwards.
Can I take it for a test drive?
I don't know.
Thank you. Fire EMS?
Nothing. You have any questions for me?
I think so. Any luck on hiring any firefighters yet?
No. Any luck on getting rid of that third ambulance? Yeah, you are.
Check's in the mail.
Val, park director?
I just need the approval of hiring Grant Nelson for summer help.
He is a good worker.
Yes, he is.
Is that council or is that just the...
Mayor.
Mayor, I'd like to make the recommendation of hiring Grant Nelson as a park worker. Did you get all your life card?
Yes.
Me too.
You're interrupting during your motion.
No.
I make a motion except the mayor's motion.
Soccer.
Roll call.
Who's the first?
Larry.
Okay. Oh, my goodness. Marth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Bridgeway?
Yes.
That's all I have.
You hiring one or two this year, do you know, or?
Um, one's coming back and then we're just hiring another.
Any questions for you, Val?
I'm sorry.
I'm good.
The Froggy Park, do you have any plans to add mulch in there?
Yes.
I've got a couple people asking, I know, like eight or 12 inches below the,
Yeah.
the recommended line, or?
We were going to get some prices on it, because we didn't put it in the budget, but we were going to get some prices on it from where we got it last time.
Okay.
Because I know it needs it bad.
If you get a gray lumber, there, it's $22 yard for the colored mulch, so.
That one over by Grayville?
Yep. Or Cuba, Cuba Road, I believe it. Just had a semi delivered a week ago, so, yeah.
Hey, are they going to turn the drinking fountains on there at Froggy Park? Not at all?
Not quite. Coleman.
I mean, later. Are they going to be operational?
I don't know. It just depends. The health department just said open the restroom.
Okay. Good news. Thank you.
Fiscal officers' report.
We have the usual fund status report, if you have any questions on that. We have the March income tax and utility collections, revolving loan collections report, and a new liquor control notice. How long to protest on those? 30 days?
I think it's, yeah, it's pretty short. Just a renewal?
Yeah.
Not a new application?
I wasn't, I, it's when I saw that, I wondered, why wasn't it win with all the rest of them that we must get, or got?
I don't know.
Is it based on like when their terms, I don't know anything about liquor.
I think there normally are like two different times a year. Certain classes are permitted, they're renewed. I think the main ones are like June 1st or something like that. But then, it depends on the class.
See, one of the revolving loan ones are due? Has that been paid, or?
That's been, Mommy Valley has that about two years ago. Stowe's using a payment service, and they missed a payment and never caught it up. And they're aware of it, and so is Mommy Valley. And they only have like five payments left.
Oh, okay.
They're almost paid off.
Any questions for Cheryl?
Do we still have COVID money to spend?
I'm sorry?
Do we still have COVID money to spend?
About 40,000.
Make a motion to console raise.
Second.
It's not authorized.
I don't think you're essential.
Well, yeah, I am. Ask my wife.
I don't think you want to ask that.
Yeah, you're right.
Mayor Bassett?
Yes.
I'd like to have an executive session about personnel. Is he into this?
Okay. We have mayor's report, a couple items here. Health fair, just want to remind everyone, the health fair is April 12th through the 17th. It'll be at Community Memorial Hospital, 6 to 10 o'clock in the community room, 1 and 2. And also, there's a new tax deadline. Ohio's changed their tax filing and payment deadline to May 17th. Hicksville is also including that, so the new deadline is May 17th, an extension of approximately one month from the original deadline of April 15th. And that's all the notes I had.
I wanted to say real quick, first time I've been down there, but the Easter egg hunt this weekend, Corey, the wants had put on, and some of, they had some volunteers though. It was really nice. They had did a terrific job. They had a lot of people donate, a lot of people help. There were 400 and some kids, a lot of parents. It was really nice, well thrown. They spent a lot of time doing that.
I think there's 13 towns and three states that had people represented there.
You did a good job.
I was there, too. It was awesome. Yep. I agree. It was a great job. Anything else? Anyone from the crowd have anything you guys like to talk about? Matt, I don't think probably. No? Nothing?
Fish? Nothing?
No.
Tomorrow, I'll copy.
Bring more down there.
Sure you do. I guess since there's nothing else.
I would ask for an executive session, a very brief one, to discuss personnel.
No action taken afterwards?
No action.
Okay. Roll call.
Marth? Clepper?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.